Adding on that portion that Commissioner Al Sager had suggested, send out a final draft to the commission and then we'd be able to move forward from there.
Yes, maybe by the end of the week so we can try to mail. Would you have time to?
Yeah, I can do this.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Once we're done.
Appreciate it.
At the end of the meeting.
It's already doing it in there.
I'm doing it now. I just, you know, just a few things, nothing else.
All right. Now that we are done with new business, we're going to move on to announcements on city-related issues in new business. This is where the City Commission brings forward anything that they know what's going on in the community or brings concerns that they wish the staff to address. Do we have any? Commissioner Arquy?
It is Black History Month, so a lot of things are happening at CMU and I'm not going to give you a catalog of the things that are happening at CMU. You can, you know, the information is on the website, the university, you know, calendar events, the Office for Diversity, Equity and Inclusion and, you know. So, but there are announcements also. So events are happening at CMU and it is important, you know, as we think about, you know, global cultures and the contributions of various groups, you know, to what is now the United States of America and to the world, that we attend these events, you know, in honor of these groups and also aware of learning a little bit more about these communities.
Anyone else? All right. Seeing no other responses, we're going to move on to public comment on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak on anything on the agenda or you have something else you'd wish to speak on, you may come to the podium, state your name and address and you'll be given five minutes. If you're joining us by Zoom, you may use the raised hand feature or star nine. If you're joining Zoom by phone, you'll be asked, you'll be let into the meeting, been asked your name and address and been given, and be given five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom?
There is.
All right. All right.
You should be getting to speak.
Hey, Francis, are you there?
Yes, I have no comment. It's an error.
Well, thank you for being with us.
Yes, we always appreciate that. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Okay. Seeing no further public comment, we are going to move right into the work discuss, yeah, work session, since it's only 7:22. We are doing a work session on tall grass weeds and natural gardening.
Brian's bum team missed this one.
Yeah. Okay. Who is heading this up?
I can just go ahead and tee us up for this evening. So, the City Commission discussed natural landscaping at our October 9, 2023 meeting. Several city ordinances that consider natural landscaping are found in your City Commission packet. In an effort to come to consensus, I recommend that the City Commission discuss those parts of the provided ordinance that garner agreement from majority of the members. This could include conditions of the, conditions of the ordinance, such as discussion on the definition of cultivation. I know we talked about that at our last work session, and so I think we want to focus on what it means to cultivate. Height allowance for what the City Commission deems as unacceptable. Any particular vegetation that the city deems harmful or a nuisance. Any exceptions or anything like that. Place and location of natural landscapes. This includes any setbacks from property lines, sidewalks, or driveways, and also whether or not to allow this, this kind of vegetation within the public right-of-way. Those are just some of the common categories that I've seen in a lot of these ordinances. I think the ordinances, there's some really great examples out there, and our hope tonight is to just come to consensus with this group to, you know, be able to draft some language or bring forward at a later date.
I think Paul can give us a little bit of background.
Yeah, I think one of the first things, I mean, to get the conversation going, I think we should talk about the right-of-way. And DPW Director Moore can probably speak more to this than I can, but in a nutshell, when you put things in the right-of-way, that's the area between the sidewalks, and the city has to come by and dig that up, disrupt it for whatever reason. Utilities obviously have a, have a right to use that area. Do we want these type, do we want something other than grass, I guess is the best way to say it? And then, we're going to have to have something in there that if, if somebody has a beautiful garden in the right-of-way, or flower garden, the city isn't responsible to put it back the way they found it, which, you know, that could upset some people, but I think that's a reasonable place to start, is what do we want to allow or not allow in the right-of-way?
I think we could still have allowances for plants other than grass, as long as it didn't obstruct traffic vision, but there should be a caveat in the ordinance that indicates that should, you know, public good take precedence, you know, the property owner, people maintaining the garden would be responsible for the recovery of the garden's condition.
Yeah, if we listed something that was more like a low, they could put something that's a low-growing, like a ground cover type thing.
But ground covers come in different heights, so, you know.
Something that's not more than five inches?
Five inches.
Five inches is.
Five inches.
Well, there's one, there's part of this one, I think, that says 36 inches, but that's far too high. I mean, I think that's too high.
Well, it depends on what, where it's located, too, because if it's further into the property, then 36 inches may not be that high.
Well, not, you know, further into the property, that wouldn't be an issue, but for the right-of-way, I was thinking for visibility.
Right.
That's the area between the sidewalk and the road.
Yeah.
And I can tell you, there are times that, you know, you come up on a stop sign, and you inch out.
Right, and you can't see.
Inch out, yeah. So, that's the thing I can, I'm concerned with, is keeping it low enough so that nothing comes much higher through there.
I mean, 24 inches, I mean, I would defer to, you know, public safety, but I feel like 24 inches might be more reasonable, or even 18, in terms of visibility. I'm just thinking from my perspective of a driver.
It might actually be better to just leave it as, you know, it can't be a site obstruction, so that, because you've got different elevations at different locations and all that, it might be that six inches doesn't work in certain locations, you know, so that might be better to just leave it kind of open for, you know, if it's, if it's causing a site obstruction, then it's, it's not allowed.
But then, how do you, you know, I mean, your definition of site obstruction and somebody's might be different, because then, you know, if it bushes out, has frills, you know, so, you know, I, I keep thinking, I appreciate what you're saying, but I think that maybe regardless of where it is, a certain height, you know, so even if you're in the valley and it's, you know, if we say six inches or 24 inches, it is 24 inches across, across the city. That way, it is consistent, no one is going to say, oh, you know, I was, you know, I feel aggrieved because you didn't complain about the height over there, and now you're looking at my height. I would, you know, I would rather we stipulate a certain height, and that way, there's no disputing what we mean.
I would suggest if we do that, that we kind of err on the low side then, rather than something taller.
What if we said something like 18 inches, or that which does not obstruct the vision of traffic? No.
No, no, that won't work. Yeah.
And please remember, you're talking about sidewalks that are close, kids on big wheels, albeit, you know, you would expect the guardian to be alert and aware. Sometimes things happen, and so you want to give that motorist as much vision as possible. So, the last thing you want is to see a little tussle of a hat above the, above the vegetation, you know, going along the sidewalk. That, that to me isn't enough of.
I, you know, I really do think that we need to be, you know, for, what is it, you know, visibility, sight obstruction, yeah, this is, this is 11 and a half.
11 and a half.
Oh, right, right, that's a good point, yeah.
That's, that's 22, that's 24, about 24, right there.
Talking about just the right-of-way.
Yeah, 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 the right-of-way. So, I really, you know, do think that we need to say, you know, to be specific about that, because if not, we're going to have quarrels with people who sort of say, yeah.
So, 18 inches are, is the height of a lot of things that are like, you know, tulips and that sort of thing? I feel like that might be something that people would plant there. 18 inches, do you, um, what's the difference type?
I think 18 to 24 inches, especially like if there's concern over visibility. I think that, that, again, we're talking about the right-of-way as a part of discussion. I think that's a reasonable discussion, a point there.
Yeah, I feel like, and like erring on the side of a little shorter, though, it, for the right-of-way does make sense, because you don't want to, I mean, you know, it's not like he's got, we've got time to go over with measuring tape. Actually, I have one in my pocket.
There's a house I drive by every day on Broadway, I think they have irises on, like in the right-of-way. Yeah, so, or crocuses.
Yeah, 11 and a half.
Irises, crocuses, yeah.
Err on the side of.
That's about 23.
And that seems like it could be too high for a kid on a big wheel, maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, let's go lower, and if it is, you know, on.
It's too high for little toddlers anyway, because they're not higher than two feet anyhow.
Exactly, I think we should go lower in that case. I want to be, you know, let's err on the side of, of, you know, safety.
12 inches or 18 inches?
I want to go down 12 inches, maybe even 10, sorry.
The current one says six inches.
Then, then stay six.
Well, the thing is, is that, you know, when we're driving down the highway, the, in Michigan, we've planted lots of wildflowers and indigenous plants on the highway to keep it green, but we mow so far, and why do we mow so short?
That section, yeah.
Why do we mow? Because animals run out.
Yes.
And we don't see them if it's tall, so we have to remember that. We are all animals, and whether or not you have a little ankle biter, or, you know, you're an adult, that can happen, so we want to, I think we should keep it lower.
One of our community cats.
Yeah, one of our community cats, yeah. I would rather have us have it lower, rather than taller, yeah.
I would, I would, I would support the six inches, you know.
That's what we have right now.
For the right-of-way.
So, we can just keep that, and then modify other things.
Focus on the main lawn. The other question, just in the same vein, or slightly different, but about the right-of-way. When City Works has to go through and dig up a section of right-of-way, do you have to provide any kind of notice to the homeowner as it is? Because again, it's the right-of-way, like, is any notice provided to individuals ahead of time? We were talking about like, if someone was growing their prized plant in the right-of-way for whatever reason.
I think they do.
Well, I think they did, because when they redid the sidewalk on my section of street, they did notify everyone that was affected.
Yeah, I think they do, they, they provide.
Because they actually had to widen the sidewalk from where it was, and it did cut into some of the property lines of everybody, so they did have to notify us.
Yeah, that's been our practice, if we're doing work in the right way, and there is something special planted there, or, or special, you know, brick pavers or something like this, then we'll notify the property owner, let them know that we're, we're going to come through, and what we usually do is we'll take it out as carefully as we can, and let them know that if they want to put it back, they can, but, you know, anything beyond just the normal turf, we leave that up to the property owners, they, if they're looking to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Talking about safety of animals, or as small children or anything, I think, yeah, keeping it lower definitely is a good idea. Talk about six inches, it sounded like we.
Well, and it also, it just keeps it nice and regulated across everybody's.
Across the, yes.
Six inches, no higher.
I, I mean, there are properties who technically already, you know, violate that, but, you know, I'm not going to go after that garden at the corner of Fancher and, what's that, Maple?
That's the other thing I was thinking about, is like, people currently, if we update the policy, are we going to see a sudden uptick? And, yeah, probably, I guess not.
Yeah.
Okay. But at least with this, everybody knows that, you know, it is uniform across the city, and, you know.
But for those that are currently not within guidelines, are they going to be grandfathered in, or are they going to be subjected to the new?
Well, this is technically just keeping it status quo, the same.
Yeah, this is the new, yeah, the new ordinance maintains that particular six inches, so from now onwards.
Okay.
No zigzaggy, you know.
And I think one thing that kind of like prompted this discuss, that did prompt this discussion was, as I understand it, there was a, some, a new code enforcement officer who was like very, like, looking to do well at his job, enforce him, so.
I'm pretty sure that he also gifted me with the door tag.
Gotcha.
Before last, so, as someone who has had to pour over the individual ordinances just to figure out what I was going to do last growing season.
Yeah.
And staying one step ahead of code enforcement. It was me and my little motley crew of, you know, we titled ourselves One Step Ahead of Code Enforcement, but, you know, well, you know, you're out there, and, you know, you see them drive by, and you're doing the, you know, the wave, hello, we see you, we're.
We're doing everything.
You know, it, but it gave me some insight as to how they see the what, natural gardening and how, which is totally different than what, how we see it. So, I think if everybody's on the same page as far as what that should, or what the parameters are, that won't upset your neighbors and stay still within guidelines, that would be great.
If I could, just to set the record straight, the current height limit in the road right-of-way is that akin to the tall grass ordinance? So, nothing can go above the regular tall grass ordinance, which I believe is homeowners get a letter at nine inches, and then at 12 inches, it's cut down after that.
Well, it says six inches, so we're going down six inches.
Oh, it's currently, oh.
It's currently cut down at 12, like warnings at nine.
Oh, I thought it was.
I would say like, if that, I mean, if that's what it is, we could just leave it that, leave it at that.
Leave it at 12?
Might be, provide more flexibility for those.
If you leave it at six, then they get the warnings when it's higher than six.
Right.
I think we should go with a six, and I agree with the advice made.
But we're talking plants, not grass.
We're talking anything in the right-of-way right now.
We're talking anything in the right-of-way, which includes lawns.
So, at six, we, they get the warning, and if it goes beyond six?
I don't know, six is awful short. Once I, once you look at it, it's awful short.
We are also, well, some of those.
Six is, six is, like.
So, you're going to go out into the yard and start measuring it?
Well, I just happen to have this in my pocket, so.
Six, six is about this much.
Right, right, that's too short, I think. I think, that's a lot of, that's a lot of maintenance. I, I mean, that's a lot of, I think, excessive, kind of defeats what we're trying to do here. I think, I don't know, 12 seems a little bit more, and it's, it's what we have already, and it's working, right? So.
Is it working?
I think, I think that's the problem stage.
Yeah.
Oh, 12 is the problem stage, yeah. But that's what the ordinance says, though.
12 is, 12 is when you get your grass cut by the city.
By the city. Right, but the, but the, we're talking about plants, like cultivated plants. I'm not talking about grass, I'm talking about cultivated plants in the right-of-way.
But cultivated plants also do flower, and they send out all sorts of stems and all of that, so what are you going to do?
You put those in your yard.
Yeah, exactly, so I, I do think that, you know, we want to be consistent, so if we're going to use the current ordinance, which says nine, and then after nine, when you get up to 12 inches, we come cut it and you pay for it, then let's stay with that. However, if we say six, which is, you know, some, yeah, look, irises get about this tall, you know, so.
Irises get a lot taller.
Yeah, my irises are.
I know, I have them, so they start, and if they get taller, you know, with, you know.
But by, by saying if it was six inches, you couldn't grow irises in the right-of-way.
Of course not. I mean, you can cut them, but to be safe, what is, what is safe? We're not just thinking about adults, we're thinking about, you know, toddlers, we're thinking about, you know, kids, you know, so, and then it also, as, you know, depends on the elevation, right? So, you know, the elevation above the road level or above, depending on where you are. So, if you add the elevation, if it's slightly higher, your ground's slightly higher, and you're saying 12 inches, maybe your ground is slightly higher by three or something, or you've, you have raised beds around there, so now it's higher.
Well, I mean, realistically, I guess people aren't going to be like, we're not doing this so that people can jump in to actively have gardens in the right-of-way. I guess I understand that, so I don't really necessarily need that to be the focus of the conversation, it just seems like, it, it does make it a little bit limiting, but that's not the priority here, you know, to, to change the policy of the right-of-way, I think, I guess. It just seems like six is very limiting, like you would, you know, you'd basically have grass at this point, and I, you know, part of this conversation was to like move away to like some more.
Natural elements.
Natural, yeah.
To reduce the amount of, amount of times out mowing.
Well, we already have an ordinance that exists, I don't know the extent to which, you know, people are paying attention, I know I pay attention, I always worry about the city coming around, and, because I travel, so I worry about that, but, so, if nine inches, you know, at this, you know, as height, works, and if it gets up to 12 inches, hello, there is a penalty for it, then, you know, if that's okay with everybody, we'll go with that. I do think we cannot, we shouldn't go beyond 12 inches. I do think we cannot, we shouldn't go beyond twelve inches because that's really problematic.
I, I, I would be more comfortable with, with twelve inches. I mean, just say, um, you know, cultivated plants or grass not to exceed.
Twelve inches, then it creeps up to fifteen, then it creeps up to eighteen, then it's twenty-four. I do think we stay with the current ordinance, sorry, Director Laurie.
No, I, I, I think it's real easy language. Nothing in the right of way is to exceed twelve inches. If, if that's the, if that, you don't have to say cultivated grass. You don't have to start calling things out. It's, nothing in the, the right of way is to exceed twelve inches in height, period.
I, I like that.
Or, or whatever number you guys select.
I think six inches, I think six inches is too short.
Is that what we have right now? Nothing to exceed twelve inches?
What is the current language?
At twelve inches, it gets cut.
Okay, so do we enforce that?
Yeah.
Even these places that have twelve inches and higher of plants?
Of, of the, like, the wildflowers in the, in the right of way? I, 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 I mean, we could, I don't necessarily.
I'm just saying, uh, if this is the language we're gonna use, are we going to, um, is that something that we do right now? That we say nothing above nine inches and anything about, at twelve inches, we mow it down?
Yes, that's, that's our practice, yes.
Okay.
My, my question is, do we have an ordinance? Cause the one I was looking at in here is not from Mount Pleasant.
Oh, yes, we.
We do.
So what does ours, what does ours currently say?
It, it, it says at nine inches, you get a warning letter.
So in essence, nine is not appropriate, so in essence, it's probably six inches, right?
At twelve, we mow it. And bill you for it, and you get a ticket.
I think we should just keep our old ordinance, it's already there.
For the, for the right of way, I don't see any problem with the way it's written. And I know from previous conversations, you know, I mean, Director Laurie is not gonna go and measure, you know, irises and if they're over twelve inches, mow them down. Um, you know, irises, they go back. But, um, you know, but, but we do need to have clarity in terms of, and I, and I think also to not muddy up the water so much, maybe, yeah, just keep that part the same.
I mean, I, I think the current, people know the current ordinance, at least they're familiar with it. We should just simply keep it and extend it to the right of way. And that way, people are not confused over what is, you know, allowable in other places, what is allowable in, you know, in the right of way. Just make it uniform. And so whatever is not permissible in, you know, when you go to mow the lawn, can't, should not be permissible when it is in the right of way. And that way, we have a uniform ordinance.
Well, the, I say the right of way, I mean, are you saying the same as your lawn?
I'm saying that whatever ordinance, yes, whatever ordinance we have right now that is not permissible or that we use for the lawn when they go to mow the lawn, you know, we should just simply have that apply also to the right of way. That way we have.
Well, I, I'm interested, but, so I'm, I'm comfortable with leaving the right of way as it's currently listed. But I think then maybe we can move on to a discussion of what the, of what is allowable in the lawn. That's gonna be the more compo- complicated question, like.
Director Laurie, the ordinance that you just read has to do with the right of way. Or is it, is it, or does it also apply to the lawn? Just, I need clarity right now.
No, it, it applies to both.
That's what I thought I heard.
But, but we were talking right of way from the standpoint of safety and heights, visibility and whatnot. And if you, i- i- a number of those ordinances call out specific language in the right of way to say, uh, some of them don't allow it, some of them, uh, do allow, uh, certain things to go on, which is different than what some of those ordinances allow in their, um, uh, for property owners, uh, for their yards. So, um, it, it's not, it, it, there, we can have a section in there specific to the city's right of way. It's, it's not uncommon, we're not breaking the mold of ordinances by specifically, um, calling out the right of way.
Okay, so I have one question. Uh, this might, this is for, um, city manager. So in your, um, examination of the various ordinances, I noticed that there are quite a few of them here. Um, there's one from, uh, Kalamazoo and I think there's one from, um, Anabo. And, but, okay, so in your examination of these ordinances, what did you perceive as the general, um, recommendation for, you know, right of way? At least what is common? What, what, you know, what language did you see as common?
I know there's some of there that just flat out say there's nothing allowed in the right of way. There's also those, um, kind of visionary, uh, or vision impediment type, uh, ordinances. So similar to what Director Moore was saying, you can do things in the right of way, but they cannot be any kind of a, um, they can't prohibit vision in any way or anything like that. And essentially, cities, when they enforce those kind of things, they just send their own folks out. And if they say, you know, yeah, I found that this was blocking my view on this time, then they would go ahead and notice that, uh, owner. So as it relates to right of way, those are the two primary things that I see. Things that just outright bar things in the right of way and things that say your right of way cannot have any sort of vision obstruction for, um, vehicle traffic.
Okay, thank you. So what we're quarreling over seems to be the height.
No, I, I, I think we're both kinda saying the same thing when it comes to the right of way.
I do think, yeah, I think it's kind of like consensus.
Yeah, so, and, and that's why I wanna try to make a statement on like consensus. So my, my feeling would be that we would keep the policy for the right of way, the same as it is now, where it's not to exceed twelve inches and you would get a warning at nine inches. I think we should include a caveat that says, um, you know, please be aware that should the city need to access, you know, any digging in the right of way or any maintenance in the right of way, um, it is, you know, the city absolves itself of yada, yada, yada.
Responsibility.
Yeah, and then, um, I don't even, I, I'm not even sure if we need to say anything about visibility because I don't think twelve inch, I don't think visibility is really obstructed by twelve inches. So, um, um, unless we, we think that would add anything to it. But I think to keep it simple, we wouldn't necessarily need to say anything about visibility.
I think we should. Because that's what we're trying to address here, you know? It's not just simply the height of the plant.
Is there anything in this, in it about visibility yet?
Yeah, in the pieces that I've read, they all, they talk about.
In our ordinance. Cause I will say, I have this like rogue mulberry bush that goes crazy and I don't get notified when that gets cut. But I'm sorry, I didn't get to it first.
Is it in the right of way?
Yeah.
Oh, well, maybe it should be cut.
Well, it's like, it's like, so there's a tree, a city tree in the right of way and like some weird mulberry bush just like grows up from underneath the roots. It's really weird.
Yeah, we should, we should say something about visibility. I can tell you a number of streets in this, you know, as, as recent as yesterday. I was having, let's say, you know, a close, close encounter of whatever it is in my car because I couldn't see around some bush, you know, at some corner. I had to pull almost into the traffic. Now, and I'm looking at that saying, I know I've complained about this before. It shouldn't be there. There are bricks, there are walls, and then you've got this bush there. No, it should not be there because we're looking at potential accidents. And maybe not with, you know, people, you know, adults, but kids in our neighborhoods. So, and, and I think we know, if we say we want this city to be safe and I'm, I have a garden, I make sure that my plants are way, way, way away from the corner. So you can see around that. Anything that's hanging over the fence, I'm trimming, right? Or I have neighbors who will come to my door and knock and say, hey, you know, listen, I would do it. But all I'm saying is, you know, for the sake of very safe neighborhood for children and, you know, those children are, what is it, you know, those big wheels, tricy- you know, it's not, you know, it's not the right, but no.
The big wheels.
Not the big wheels or the tricycles, yeah. You know, for the sake of those children, for the sake of, you know, just simply making sure we don't have, um, unsafe environments.
Do others, I mean, I, I'm, I'm definitely flexible. I definitely see the point if it's worth mentioning, you know, issues with visibility. Does anybody have a problem with including that in the language of?
I think that we should also include, um, the visibility. I think that it's very important.
That way it also gives residents an idea of why.
Yes, okay.
Why that decision came to.
Good point.
So for the sake of visibility, um, like plantings in the roadway are not to exceed current standards, it sounds like.
And you won't have somebody going to court one day and saying, no, but you didn't mention visibility there. I didn't see it. What are you talking about, visibility?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool. All right, so should we move, or everybody move on to, enough direction for the right of way? Okay. Guys wanna talk about the rest of the lawn?
Um, I know Grace, um, you, we had talked, um, you had, last year, you went through the process of doing a lot of natural landscaping on your lawn. Big takeaway for you on that, as far as like a change.
It's a lot more work than people expect. Uh, basically because you also still have to keep in mind of the guidelines of maintaining when the season's over, cutting it down, even though best practices say leave it up to help facilitate overwintering for birds and, and bees and whatnot, but that still has to come down. I think if people start small and have some clear parameters on where to start, it wouldn't be so arduous and you'd be less likely to rankle your neighbors who may not necessarily understand, um, what you're trying to do and may think that you're just basically refusing to do yard work. So, um, what I did do was peruse the codes pertaining to noxious weeds. And I think noxious weeds has to be better defined because that could be very subjective. But what I had done in my research is that when I was going through the park system and looking at what was naturally growing, I figured whatever was growing there, I was pretty much insured that it was not a noxious weed. Otherwise, the park and recs people would have basically tried to eradicate it. So I think if we have some guidelines as far as cultivating or what that means, um, to me, it means purposeful and planned, um, natural boundaries that are able to be utilized. Um, and the maintenance part, stressing the maintenance part. I think that would start giving some people some guidelines as to what they can work within as they go about it.
The Michigan State University Cooperative Extension Program lists, you know, native plants and what is considered, um, not, not just weeds.
Oh, yeah, they're gonna reference that, yeah.
Yes, and I think that that's very important to, um, to reference that for people that are looking to do something that's more natural.
Right, but I think trying to start going from a cultivated lawn or whatnot or a formal garden or whatnot to naturalizing your landscape, I think some guidelines are needed.
Yes.
Um, not only for the homeowner or property owner, but for the neighbors also so that they also will understand that you're not, just not letting your property go
Yeah.
haywire, so to speak. But to also maybe educate them also as to what the benefits are as far as the environment.
Yeah.
I, I, I think that if we, you know, develop, carefully develop the language of this ordinance, it probably would do that, you know? Yeah, the, uh, MSU 4H, you know, all extension services as a list. Um, you know, the State of Michigan also, there's something there also, um.
But I also think we need to simplify it too because I don't think all, people are going to spend that much time researching it. I mean, if we can give maybe sample pictures of what would be allowed along those genres.
But there are a lot of them, it's not just one.
Well, that's true. But as far as an example, as far as.
Yeah, we're also suggesting that if, you know, the link though to this. So if they wanna do additional, you know, additional, additional research, I think it would benefit them so that, but you're right, giving some examples and then providing the link for them to go do additional research.
Yeah, like I'm planning on doing my front lawn more of a natural landscaping this year. And I've already thought of, um, because I don't have a sidewalk in my neighborhood, I've already thought of how far back from the road I am going to keep the, either grass or a low-growing, you know, like, um, sedum or myrtle or something like that so that it doesn't grow up tall so that there is no, um, no impediment of any, any of my neighbors trying to get out of their driveway.
Right.
Right? Um, I've also thought of where does my house, uh, where does my front lawn come close to my neighbor's lawn? And what am I going to do there?
Yeah.
You know, cause I don't want, I'm, I already have a neighbor that pulls dandelions cause I, I like dandelions, you know? And he's, he's always pulling his dandelions and I don't blame him, you know, that's how he wants his lawn. Um, I believe that if a dandelion blooms, you can go barefoot. So that's what I do. If it's out there, you'll see me walking in the snow, even if there's just one out there. But there, there's things that I want to be able to place in my yard and I'm gonna start with small pockets, small gardens that I can start extending out. But I don't want to extend them into my neighbor.
Right.
Because that's not fair to them, right? So those are the things that we have to think about. Think about your neighbor, who's around you and how you're going to do things.
I know that was a concern that, um, Director Laurie had brought up previously also when we discussed this, was kind of neighborhood cohesion and like, um, and I think, um, as we're looking to give guidance to residents on how to take on this new thing cause it is, it is relatively new to the area as far as code goes. I do like, um, I believe it's Madison Heights.
Yeah.
How, like, they start off their section on nat- natural landscape and with kind of like, this is the mission, this is the objective. And I do, and I do like that they kind, that they put in there, um, this is not, let's see, um, it is not the intent of this legislation to allow vegetary areas to be unmanaged or overgrown in ways that may adversely affect human health, safety, all of that. So I do like that kind of like starting it off there and then going into the details of like, well, this is what we think. So if, if like you, if code enforcement had to have a conversation, they could have more ground or flexibility in that way, I guess, to work with.
And, and I think, um, when the term was introduced and I first learned about it from, from you guys, the naturally planned landscape, to me, you gotta take the naturally out of it. Cause it, it's almost contradictory i- in my mind.
It is a lot of work.
Because I'm like, it's natural and it's planned. It, what, I would much rather have it be planned landscape because now you have, I, I think that the perception is going to be, you let it go, grow as nature intended it. And, and therefore, yeah, I planned it to grow here and, and it's natural. So where's the, where's the issue, so to speak? So I, again, it's, it's a very fine line between, um, well, the Wild, Wild West of, of lack of land maintenance uh, or yard maintenance to, um, you know, being so strict, you know, it's, it looks like a golf course. So we're trying to strike that balance.
Well, I mean, you know, I hear you, Director Laurie, but, you know, we're using terms that, um, you know, environmentalist or, you know, people who do ecology also are using. So they're talking about using native plants. And we're looking, you know, a lot of these ordinances have that. You know, they're talking about plant natural landscaping. So in which case they're using na- native plants, right? As opposed to hybridized plants that might go crazy and do all sorts of things. So, you know, um, but you're right. Um, I, I see where it can be confusing, plant, you know? Yeah, so it's using natural, native, indigenous plants, but planning how you do the landscaping.
Well, I can tell you how not to do it. I put down, I put down like wildflower seed and thought, hey, I had this vision and come July, I got that door tag from code enforcement. It said, you got seventy-two hours to mow this down.
Yeah.
And I'm like, and so like, Director Laurie has said, yeah, you have this vision, you could just let it. No, you can't. And so I can, I can assure you that, that's why I say you have to literally plan where.
Where it's going, yeah.
Yeah.
So Royal Oak has a good one, you know, some, go ahead. So Royal Oak has a good one, you know, some, go ahead.
Yeah, so Grace, um, when, in that experience then, uh, my question would be, what was the, what was being, um, what was the violation in that situation? So we had, uh.
Several.
Several?
Yeah, it was a noxious weed, because you really couldn't tell what was what.
Gotcha.
And so I still have a lot of wildflower seed leftovers. So last growing season, what I did was, I did in smaller batches, but I had a border mowed around it. So that, you know, they didn't say that cultivation had to be in a pot. You can actually still control the growth itself. And if stuff wasn't working out or it was looking too gangly, you had to be able to just go in there and yank stuff that just was teetering on that fine line of looking unsightly and actually looking like what you intended on it to look like.
Gotcha.
So it was, it's kind of like things like that. You have to basically expand your definition on what cultivated is, um, what naturalization is, because what may look natural to you may not fit everybody else's definition. So I think that's where a lot of the discrepancy of definition between people ends up being. So I think if we can give some guid- guidance on that, I think everybody would be happier for it. But by no means is it just, you know, sow seed and leave it. That's the quickest way to get those visits and, yeah.
Are there plants you wouldn't plant, wouldn't recommend? And it sounds to me as if that's part of what you're.
Well, the wildflower seed. The wildflower seed I got was from, um, a vendor.
You don't mention the name.
No, I'm not mentioning names. But it was specific for this region, the Midwest.
Interesting.
So it was, what was naturally would be growing here in an open field or whatnot.
Yeah, the, the forgotten city ordinances, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, I think that we definitely need a, um, a space at the beginning of this ordinance that lays out the definitions.
Yeah.
This is what we mean by natural, this is what we need, mean by landscape, this is what we need by cultivated, this is what, you know, so that there is no misunderstanding.
Right.
Because it's true. I mean, we had people here yelling that cultivate to them means, you know, a plowing field and planting things in a row. And it's like, to me, that's not what it always means.
Or someone's put it in a pot. Well, that doesn't mean that necessarily either.
Yeah. So I think me, and, you know, maintenance, we should define what maintenance means. In a, you know, when you're maintaining, you know, your flower bed, you can either, like this last summer, because I was so busy with things, my flower bed did not get the maintenance it needed. There were actually plants that were still sitting in the little pots on the, on my, uh, my bricks along my flower bed that eventually I just had to toss because they just, you know, they didn't make it.
Kind of go in, into that then. So what we don't want, um, I think it kind of define, defining like maintenance and everything. Um, I think as through several of the examples we've seen is vermin, is, uh, like preventing or like any, uh, so I think having like cultivation means like keeping in mind these concepts. Like we're not looking to encourage like habitat for vermin or anything or rats.
Invasive plants.
And then also invasive plants. Um, I know the MSU extension like recommends native plants, but they believe they also can maintain a list of like invasive plants. So it'd be good to outline those also as something bad there. Though, uh, talking about going to the right of way, um, the setback, I think would also be a good maintenance point that we could talk about. Um, from the people, I've heard four feet mentioned from property lines. I've heard a couple different, um, setback ideas.
Yeah.
So like, okay, so you have the right of way sidewalk and then your property. How far back from the, your property and from your neighbor's property are we talk, uh, do, are we thinking? Um, I think, um, probably have some division between neighboring property lines. I mean, unless you have a discussion with your neighbor, but I don't, we, we have no, code enforcement wouldn't know whether or not you had that discussion.
Do we have, uh, any language that addresses setback currently?
No.
I'm not certain currently, because everything currently is just uniform, flat, you know?
Yeah, I didn't think so, because, okay, so, yeah, absolutely. I think we do need to talk about that.
Because if we're talking a couple, like, above, I mean, like, we're talking at least 36 inches, if not higher.
Well, I know for the section of wildflower garden I had, it was like a foot setback from the sidewalk onto my property line.
Whoa.
Gotcha.
And that was basically a foot or two feet, something like that.
About this much.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I mean, just to keep it off the sidewalk, because you don't want, you know, the big wheels and everybody else on the other side on the city east, but you don't want that on encumbrance too.
Just to make sure that the city commission's clear, there's nothing in the current ordinance that calls for any particular setback. In fact, the only reference in the current ordinance that references setback at all just references the front yard setback in, in measuring the entire front yard essentially.
I think, um, it'd be, so it's, it just, as far as setback within that one foot space, like you could have like smaller plants, you could have like marigolds or like whatever kind of plant you want there.
One foot is too narrow.
Yeah. One.
For me, it's too narrow.
I mean, so you're working on yours?
It's too narrow for me. One foot is too narrow.
Well, that's why when I was looking at how I'm going to, because I'm only going to do it to the front yard, because if I do it to the backyard, it's a waste of my time because of my dogs. But in the front yard, I'm going to have it setback five feet from the, from the road. Because of, um, being able to see. And I'm probably going to do a two foot around the area. I have my driveway, my front yard, my neighbor's driveway. But behind or on the side, we have a small patch that's shared. So I'm going to make sure that I don't put anything there besides what I already have, my roses and things on the side. Because they're not going to like shoot out, sprigs out into his yard, right? And so I'm gonna, and that's probably going to be a five foot section. That's, so I don't give him anything unwanted.
You want this?
Thank you.
But those are, you know, I think it's all about being a good neighbor, but if you're going to be a good neighbor, we're still going to have to define that as well.
You're making me think about that commercial.
Or do something about sumac trees?
What about?
Big setback there.
Director?
Was there any interest on, from property line? So in your case, uh, the neighbor that comes, uh, well, that would be to the south of you. Do we want to say it has to be setback so many feet or you can grow or do whatever you want as long as it's your property?
I think that if you share a property line, there should be a setback.
I don't have anything on my property line with my neighbor. It's open space. It's like the prairie. You can see for miles.
So I, so, so that would, that would be, the setback would mean a swath of grass?
Yes.
Okay. Just to be clear.
There has to be a setback, probably the width of a mower.
Are we saying it has to be grass?
But what if both neighbors want to do the.
The natural.
The, the, the planned landscaping?
Yeah.
And I still think, but just because they want to do a planned landscape, doesn't mean they want to use the same plants.
That's true too.
Right. So I guess question for code enforcement then would be if two neighbors have a shared vision and everything, that.
That gets too complicated.
We put in a code to protect the neighbor, but both neighbors are in agreement about something. I guess kind of that situation, is anything, is, do we have any way to communicate that?
Exceptions, exceptions make poor policy.
Yeah, yeah.
If we're going to put a setback, we're going to put a setback. If we're not going to put a setback, we don't.
But then if, no, but then realistically, so if there's not a setback, if there is a setback in the ordinance for the property line, you're not going to go, and, but nobody's complaining about it, would you go and ticket them? Like, let's say, you understand what I'm saying? Like, you would, let's say, you know, Boomer and I live next door. We both have this shared vision and we both have plants and we like the way it looks and nobody's complaining. It's not affecting, it's our, it's our lawns. There's no reason to.
Exceptions.
Okay, I understand that, but that's, we can still have it in, we can still have it in the, in the ordinance. But if nobody's complaining about it, realistically, there's no issue to the city.
Well, usually code enforcement doesn't come out unless there's a complaint.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
You guys do drive around, but really it is the complaints that drive you out there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, so it really wouldn't be a problem, I think.
I think it probably wouldn't be a problem.
I'm not, I'm not, yeah. In fact, it's better that we just don't say any and we just hope for the best. And then, but then if, yeah, because realistically.
It's just to protect people though, you know?
Yeah.
So people know their rights, you know? Yeah, here is this, this is your right. So if they decide, hey, I like your dandelions, let them creep over, you know, fine, let's have a part of dandelion over there, you know?
Yeah. And if they get a new neighbor and they're like, ah!
But I think the setback also has, you know, it has to do with, uh, with the, the right of way too, right? You know, at the front, you know, so it's just, you know, so I think maybe having a uniform, a setback for all sections, you know?
So we're talking about setback from all sides of the property? I'm thinking, I, that's what I'm thinking. I don't know.
Anything, yeah, that, uh, butts with another person.
Because that could be problematic, especially if you share a fence line.
I do share fence lines.
Yeah, I don't have fence. I have.
So you couldn't, so technically under those policies that you couldn't have, well, it doesn't make any sense. I got a bunch of, I mean, there's, everybody's got stuff planted up against their fence lines though. I mean, I'm, I mean, yeah.
Bushes and things like that, trees, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
We're talking about natural landscaping.
From your property.
Right, but.
Right on it.
Oh, okay.
Manager discretion.
I want to make sure, yeah, the, uh, what we're talking about is just planned natural landscaping, because obviously all of us have stuff against our fence. I have the same thing. You know, I call out four instances in the Madison Heights, um, in the Madison Heights ordinance, they utilize four feet. And that might, I don't know if that just gets the conversation starting for an example or not, but.
Such a.
They say a setback of four feet.
That's what Madison Heights has.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah.
All planned natural landscapes on page 62, top of page 62. All that planned natural landscape shall be setback at least four feet from any lot line in the front yard.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Front yard.
In the backyard, I guess.
Silence?
That's, um, because if it's, if it's like a, if someone has like a built-in fence or a wall between their yards, then the backyard doesn't matter as much.
Right.
But if someone has just like a chain link fence, then that's, starts to get.
Yeah, so I have chain link on two sides of my property, you know? Yeah, I would say like, or unfenced backyards, but then like a chain link is still a fence.
Start defining a good fence, yeah.
Yeah, um, or a complete obstruction, I mean, some.
But they're talking about, I think, you know, really, you know, they're talking about the front yard. So what are they doing? You know, the city vehicle or cars are not driving behind your yard, you know, so.
But your neighbor, but it's for your neighbors.
Well, if your neighbor starts complaining, that's, then, then that's another thing.
Well, we, so we just need to define what rights the neighbors have.
Yeah, we just simply, yeah, we say you will provide that so that everybody knows what their rights, you know, are, and then.
So what rights do backyard neighbors have? So we need to decide, right?
Don't creep onto their fence or into their yard.
So would we build in a setback to the entire property line then to prevent creeping?
I don't know whether that is necessary.
Backyard plants cannot infringe on neighboring. I think that's unenforceable, because you know, if birds are tromping on your plants and they go and deposit seeds every place, then, you know, there's creep right there. You have no control with that.
I don't think that's necessary. I think this one just.
Unenforceable.
Yeah, stay with the front one, because that's where they, the concern is with visibility, what people has, you know, driving and all of that.
Visibility, safety. So are we worried about the backyard at all then?
I'm not.
I'm not worried about backyard, but what is the ordinance that we have right now? Does the law, code enforcement go into a people's backyard?
Yes. I say that from experience, yes.
If they can see in the backyard?
So would it be then the, the cut at 12 feet and like the same.
12 feet.
12 feet, yes, 12 feet. We're going to the diving pool.
I, 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 I have huge vines, not mine, growing in my backyard, like right against me.
Yeah, I.
Hello, this is creeping over into my, so what do I do now?
Do we, so do we have definitions for the backyard then? Is it 12 inches still?
Yep.
He's talking about grass.
Right, but that's just grass.
Grass or trees?
Grass and noxious weeds, okay.
Okay, so grass or noxious weed? Okay, no trees then, hmm, no shrubs. I, yeah, it, it makes, it does make sense, you know, if, if it is noxious weed, of course, that becomes problematic. You know, people can get sick from some, the smell or the toxicity of, you know, some weed or pollen from some weed. So, you know, it could be invasive and suddenly you have, you know, some weed from Antarctica creeping.
So I think that the issue is though, do we need anything about a setback in the backyard?
No.
Okay, I, I kind of agree with that too. I mean, unless it's like.
Unenforceable.
Because it's unenforceable, okay.
It's problematic.
Kind of agree with that, just from the description.
I mean, if something, I mean, I, I had a lot of issues with, sorry not to be giving all these personal stories, but my neighbor's property, like the overgrowth in the backyard nearly knocked my fences down. And like he had a whole section of his yard literally triangled off, like, because he just was not maintaining it and it was, and it became like a secret garden back there. And, and it's pushed like the fence down and stuff like that, so I just, I probably should have complained.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's one of those, I mean, so I just want to know what rights would a property owner have under those circumstances? If, if I, theoretically, if I had gone to code enforcement and said, you know, my neighbor's, you know, lawn is out of control. It's like pushing into my yard. Like what rights do I have then, like under the current of code?
Um, if we say no setback in the backyard, could we say something to the amount of not to be destructive to neighboring property?
What do you mean by not to be destructive?
Because I've heard people complain about stuff like my neighbor's tree dropped a bunch of branches in my yard. Like if it's a tree that goes over, and, and, and I know, I agree, this is not like the point of this conversation, but if we're discussing this ordinance, like, we should talk about all these things that like would potentially fall under it.
But we're not talking about trees, we're talking about weed, so.
Yeah, but I, but yeah, this, this was, well, you know what a lot of it was, was English ivy.
Well, I have some, you know, I have, what is it, nightshade and wild grape that creep in from some other yard into my yard, you know, where I have vegetable. I mean, I just simply go there and I cut them. I don't have, you know, I mean, you can just pull them, cut them. So that, you know, as Mayor Pashbacka was saying, if you want to maintain good neighborliness, you know, I guess you can just pull the things and get rid of them and be sensitive. I do think that, um, we need to put together an ordinance that is enforceable, that doesn't seem to be, that isn't hostile to, to, you know, to the people, you know? And, and then I don't want everybody turning around and, and calling Director Loria, you know, on, on, on their neighbors every week. Do you realize how much headache that would be? You know, call him 24 hours, you know? This nightshade is creeping into my.
Okay, so for, for the time being, um, you know, we don't necessarily have to.
Sorry, this is.
Um, well, I mean.
I'm, you know.
But I, I, I'm telling, I'm telling you, literally it just like the fence and I, and this happens, right? Yeah.
I, I think we need to be just really seriously, let's be practical. What can we enforce? What is realistic? What is responsible?
I think what we're supposed to be doing here is figuring out what are, how are we going to define natural landscaping? And, um, we keep, you know, unintended going into the weeds.
Going into the weeds.
I, I thought we did, I thought we did a bit of that already.
We did a bit of that, but then we're going further and I think we're talking more on front lawns.
Because we're talking about, was it setback? That's what took us there.
We're on the topic of maintenance.
Maintenance, setback, yeah.
Just to summarize a few things that I've noted here, uh, sounds like we are good on keeping kind of the status quo on the right of way. We need a definition for noxious weeds. We wanted a definition for cultivation. We want a definition for the natural landscaping. Um, and then we had also talked. And then we had also talked about the property lines restriction. I might propose that maybe what would make sense is, we still have some time to come back to the city commission with a couple of different definitions of those terms. And at least this way, we've kind of narrowed things down, and we're getting a little bit closer here rather than trying to go through, I, I just, just as a suggestion, rather than trying to go through the exercise of getting the definition down tonight from the dais, going back to the drawing board, coming back with a few different definition concepts that we want to see and picking one of those.
I agree. And, and there are models, there are, you know, there is language in a number of these already existing ordinances that we can look at, and, and then, you know, have city manager and staff present to us next time.
I just want to mention that we, I, this, we had this discussion, you know, another time, and I think we all kind of liked what the MSU extension packet listed, and it's relevant to our area, so I would recommend that we just almost copy that.
Don't plagiarize, please, acknowledge them.
Oh, no, no, and, and put a link on the city's website directly to that policy, because then we look, really look superficial.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. So is that where we are at this point? We're going to come back with some definitions and we'll hash through this again?
I think that makes sense to the city commission here.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So at this time, we are closing the work session, and we'll come back to it after definitions have been created, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
I second.
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no, we're adjourned at 8:22.